Would ask everyone to please rise. Tim, you want to lead us? Please, Tim. All right ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Bobby, roll call, please.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
Noel Deere. Mary Newfeld.
Yes, here.
Danny Pyatt.
Here.
Danielle Youska. JD Schrader.
He'll be here in a few minutes.
Jeanie Long. And Mike Foldig.
Here. We did receive prior notification that Dr. Deep and Ms. Youska would not be able to be here this evening. So we hope whatever it is they got going on, they'll be there next time. Jeanie's running a little behind us there.
We'll move right on here to the concession business. We need to look for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the minutes of the April 24, 2018 May third special edition financial report for April 2018 consideration of current bills checks number 8742 through 8841 in the amount ACHs number 171-801196 through 171-801343 in the amount of $1,404,271.01 and one wire transfer in the amount of $22,507.84 for a total of $1,329.191.00 and its four cents.
Two seconds.
One second, please.
Motion from Ms. Mead, second from Ms. Long. Any questions on any of the checks, the ACHs, or anything else that is listed in the motion? Hearing that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. And then move on to item B, public comment. No one signed up. No one signed up. Uh, we'll move right on to student representative report. Jack, you're running solo today.
America's another softball team. Well, first off, obviously graduation is Sunday. The band plays at graduation this year. Solo ensemble went to state because they do almost every year. It's pretty cool. Tomorrow night is the senior award. Awards and scholarship night. We all get a lot of kids who get scholarships and just work and things like that. A lot of, this year, a lot of our tech ed students have competed in competitions like Skills to the Save, Wood Tech Competition at NCC, and CYA, World League Competition. All those organizations and stuff really prepare kids for the workforce and what they want to do when they leave high school, whether they go into college for that or just going into trades. Past week, it was Club Week. Different will be in clubs every day at lunch. Different clubs have games and things like that. Pretty much all year, I feel like our clubs are managed very well. Like Suncle, FCA, FFA, DAKA, Spanish Club. A lot of good people are trying to love to fly kids in the ball, which is also good for resumes, things like that. Boys' baseball only has one loss this year. They have the number one seed in the playoffs. Girls' softball is at the regional finals on Friday. Pretty much last, I just want to thank the board for allowing me to be your rep and speaking at Fairness Ball. So it's been a great opportunity and I would order next year equal.
Well, I thought I saw a place where there was a Spanish club that had a jalapeno.
Yeah, a jalapeno eating place.
Who was the unfortunate winner?
They had milk there too. They had like, they had like a jalapeno inside of them.
I must have been like, I like my jalapenos as well, but not that many of them were raw. But looked pretty interesting. Great, any questions? Board answer, Jack.
I would just say, thanks, Jack, representing the student body this year.
Appreciate it, Jack. Thank you. Let's go on to item five, new business. Committee of the whole.
I move the board approve the committee in four minutes for the meeting held on May 10, 2018.
Second. Okay, motion from Ms. Mead, second from Ms. Pyatt. Any of them have a chance to review them? Any questions, comments? Okay, hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to answer. Item B, Anago High School Band Trip to Disney. Looks like we have some people to present. Some of them look very familiar.
I've written, yeah, you know. Last month, the high school band had the honor of going to the Orlando, Florida Disney Magic Music Days to perform, and we did a unique clinic down there in the sound studio. It was a great trip, had a great time. A little tricky with the weather getting back, but we got back. And I got a, or Pyatt here, senior band member, she's going to kind of explain a little bit more about the details and trip, and then I'm going to have a video to show of the workshop that we did down in Disney in our sound studio.
All right, so first Tuesday night, we had to get to the high school at 11:30 p.m. So that was pretty rough. And then Wednesday morning, we left at midnight and we drove all the way to Minneapolis. And we jumped on a plane, went to Atlanta. Atlanta was our connecting flight to Orlando. And, and when we got there, we waited at a resort for a while. I don't remember which resort it was. I think it was.
I'll start.
It was awesome. So we stayed there for a while, we waited until we could get back, and then we went to Disney Springs, formerly known as Downtown Disney, to eat at Planet Hollywood. It was amazing. In my opinion, this Planet Hollywood was a lot better than the one in New York, but whatever. And so what else did we do? Oh, we walked around Disney Springs for quite a long time. We had a little bit of an issue going on, but it was all resolved eventually. And then Thursday morning, we got up really early and we spent a few hours, probably three or four hours there in Hollywood Studios. And we just got to walk around, chill for a while, and then we all met up at a certain time to do our workshop. That was so, so much fun that I'll probably never forget that. The director there, I can't remember his name, but he was an amazing saxophone. It was just incredible. I know my brother would freak out. It was so cool. So we talked about just a bunch of different techniques to work on, like with sight reading, with, I pretty much just sight picking. And we sight read a bunch of Disney music, including A Small World, stuck in our heads the rest of the day. And we played two songs, two short songs for our short that we'll be singing soon. We played Trash From Camp from Target as well as You're My Heart from Target. Really cute. And after the workshop, we went back to Hollywood Studios for a while and watched Firework Show, which wasn't really too much of fireworks, we knew about the stage performance, but there were some fireworks. It was fun. And then Friday, the first thing we did was we got into our uniforms in the heat to go perform at Disney Springs on the stage there. And our guide was, I don't know if he's considered a guide or what, but he was really nice. And he shows around like the practice backstage sort of area where you just warm up and all that. It was really cool. It was a lot cooler there than it was in the performance spot because of, of course, we got stuck right in the sun. We barely see our music, but he pulled dirt. He did. And after the performance, he gave us these Mickey ears, which says Disney Performing Arts. You cannot buy these. You can only get them if you perform at Disney World. So that's really cool. And he called it like earning art years because we were official Disney employees. And then, oh, right, we also went to Epcot, which if you did the world showcase, was a really, really educational experience, especially at least for me it was because I'm learning German and I really want to continue learning German. So we stayed in that part of Epcot for quite a while, me and a couple of my friends did. And cool thing about that is there was a German band playing there from Germany. So we got to talk to them in German. It's a little bit big word, but we talked to them and I also brought something from Germany. And the cool thing about this is it was made in Germany. So that's really fun. And then, oh, we watched the firework show in Epcot that night as well. And Saturday, we went to Magic Kingdom. We spent pretty much all day there with like a three hour or so break in the middle to go back to Magic Kingdom later on and watch that firework show. Sunday, we went to Animal Kingdom. We got all our luggage together and went to Animal Kingdom for a while. That day was a little bit more solemn, you know, guys were just jumping around, probably because we were leaving Disney, but it could also be that Animal Kingdom was so humid because of the different climate that had to be there. It was, it was insane. And so then around four or five or so, something like that, we went back to the resort to grab our luggage to head back to the airport. And we had to signify as Disney in that day, so it's pretty sad we had to hide still. It was not fun. We also, that night, we got stranded in St. Louis for a couple of hours. I, we stayed in my room on that airport a little bit. And then we got back to Minneapolis. I didn't even know what time. It was, it was rough. But then we, it felt like we stayed in the Minneapolis airport for like three hours before we finally got onto a bus and went to our hotel. And they had to get up early and then drive back home in the snow on Monday morning. So that was pretty much the gist of the Disney trip. A lot of fun.
Yeah, the claim of the workshop was great. I mean, it's recognized by NAFME, which is National Association for Music Education, as covering content and power standards in our field. So it was very educational. The kids got a lot out of it. They got into the life of what a studio musician has to go through. Not only the skills you have to have as a musician, but those soft skills too. Being on time, being prepared, you know, because the life of a studio musician is a very cutthroat business. If you come in and you're not prepared or you're late, you basically get blacklisted and, you know, people talk, producers talk, and, you know, and it's still, the soft skill obviously in music, but in other fields too, that's very important to have. So I'm going to play the short video. This is the video we made at the workshop here, and this is the band performing.
What about some?
Sure. A very quick whirlwind thing, quick two hours rehearsal going.
A little of these. So, here we go.
That's it, so. We had about 43 in the group, yeah.
Did some of them not go?
Uh, most of the group, some, some say that. But I'd just like to thank all the administrator, administration here at the high school, central office, who really helped make this happen, not only planning the trip, but, you know, the get back, snowstorm, kind of everybody working together to make sure the kids are safe. So kids had a great time, they learned a lot, and I'd like to thank everybody who helped out with that.
Did they, did they make the picture movie first and then the composer gets to make whatever music they want, or does the music come first?
Well, usually what happens is the picture comes first and the music comes second. I think this was the case here. So it's, the composer writes around what a given, given little scene is or a movie. And then the composer and using holds and, you know, different speed changes kind of works that in with, you know, what's on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you. Good job.
Can I add one little note there? I just want to thank the administration, Dr. Tim, for spearheading on Sunday night. She was right on the, on the ball with getting hotel rooms for the kids instead of driving that bus back from Minneapolis. I wasn't the driver, by the way, but I wouldn't want to do it, so thank you for making care of our kids. Look out.
At 8:00 a.m., I got the email they wrote, the last one was going to bed. So I had to go again.
Made it, actually, made it.
Jeff, once again, thank you. We'll move right on to the board action items. Item E, HRA Plan Revision to Sick Leave, include sick leave. I can tell you right now, there's a couple of us up here, our computers are a little froze up, so. Tim, you may have to lead us through.
Yeah. Like, I, my agenda's changing on me too, so.
The wonderful world of electronics, God bless.
Let me log back in, log back in, let's see if that works.
Did yours person up this laptop?
Mine is two. And it's a power sorry, it's a power, like, yeah, it's a primary.
That's what mine is like when I got in.
Yeah, it is.
It's crazy. Okay. If you log back in, it shouldn't come back.
Oh, if I log on, I'm on it? Yeah. Ready, let's try that. But my order is all out.
Yeah, my words, me too.
Is your thing just fine, by the way?
Yeah.
Thank you for that reason.
Bobby, is your order moving?
I'm in the minutes module, so, but it's telling me it won't say it.
The HRA. So. Clara, show us board action on those two. Did you just move your order? So what are we going to do first? The B first and then I agree a different order?
If we follow the printed agenda, then we, if we follow the original format, under board action, it would be item A, the HRA Plan Revision to Include Sick Leave. Okay.
Okay, so I move the board approve the sick leave provisions as presented.
Hey, motion by Ms. Mead, second by Ms. Mary. Discussion. Okay, the document that, you saw the plan document last, committee of the whole meeting. So I put together kind of a summary document that is called premium only HRA. And if you pull that open, I, there are two provisions within the document. The first one talks about the different levels of accumulated sick leave employees have based on their date of hire. Then there's, there's the potential for an annual reimbursement calculation based on the number of hours they've accumulated their sick leave. And what I'm suggesting is if an employee has reached the maximum amount, and we at the end of the year, sometime in June, we look at where they're at, we would determine that they'd be up to 10 days that they would be eligible for. We would make a contribution and the rate would be at $50 a day. The days are prorated based on the hours worked. That money would go into an HRA account and it would be vested at the time of deposit. And what that means is that the employee then would own it. So if at that point, they, they walked away with, let's just say they had 10 days in, they had $500 in their account, and if they quit the following day, that money would be theirs, they kind of, we granted them the sick leave, we reimbursed them for it, they could take it and it'd be portable, go to a job. But they would not be eligible for reimbursement of the balance of their accumulated sick leave. That only occurs when they, they meet their retirement requirements, which are WSR eligibility and above the age of 55, and they are retiring from the Anago School District. At that particular juncture, we would then reimburse them for whatever they have in their account. And they would only receive that, they would only become vested at the point of retirement.
So in the end, they're going to get paid for all their sick leaves?
If they retire from the district.
If they're.
Correct.
If they leave prior to, the money stays here.
The money in their account that they've been given on an annual basis is theirs.
But there's not a payout for the sick leave that they just.
There's no payout for the, for the bulk of it, but the annual contribution there would be.
Okay.
Okay, everybody working on, around there? Well, then the, the health reimbursement arrangement for retirees that are.
Yeah, that was something we went over at committee of the whole.
Yep. Great, any other questions, Tim? Bobby, let's do roll call, please.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
Mary Newfeld.
Yes.
Danny Pyatt.
Yes.
Jeanie Long.
Yes.
JD Schrader.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
And Mike Foldig.
Yes.
Good. Opel, next up.
I move the board approve the accelerated payment of unexpended funds in the amount of up to $150,000 into the district fund 73 Opel.
Hey, motion from Ms. Perry, second from Ms. Long.
Any discussion on that? So Mike, we, we have retirees that are eligible for post employment benefits of health insurance, and we kind of have a pay as you go. And this is action that we typically, that I typically give to the board and make, and it's something board members have seen before. If we had unexpended funds, it allows us to contribute into Fund 73, claim aid on it, and reduce our contribution level in any given year in the future to help us, we're kind of prepaying for something that we've granted teachers and administrators in the past that we're still paying for. So it's kind of a way to, to accelerate what our obligation. We probably have an obligation that is in the neighborhood of seven to eight more years to pay on it.
Anyone else have questions, Tim, or Ms.? Bobby, let's roll them up, please.
Mary Newfeld.
Yes.
Danny Pyatt.
Yes.
JD Schrader.
Yes.
Jeanie Long.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
And Mike Foldig.
Yes.
Okay, item C, the CISA 2018-2019 Shared Services Contract.
I move the board accept the shared service agreement, CISA 9 presented for the 2018-19 school.
Motion from Mr. Mary, second from Ms. Mead. Discussion on this.
Just added here the annual renewal of services we traditionally purchase through CISA.
Pretty much about same, so. No questions.
Danny Pyatt.
Yes.
JD Schrader.
Yes.
Jeanie Long.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Andy Mary. Mary.
Yes.
Mary Newfeld.
Yes.
And Mike Foldig.
Yeah.
Okay, item B, the 4K Partner Agreement 2018-2019.
Do you have a motion? I move that we approve the 4K, 4K Partner Agreements with All Saints, Head Start, and Lorier, second through the 18-19 school.
Motion by Mr. Mary, second by Ms. Long. Any discussion on the review? Prepareable for last.
Correct.
Who's the second?
Second was by.
JD Schrader.
Yes.
Jeanie Long.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
Mary Newfeld.
Yes.
Danny Pyatt.
Yes.
And Mike Foldig.
Yes.
Okay, next one up is the Medicaid vendor change.
Sent the proposed contract. Did you, I don't know, have you received it?
Oh.
Did they have received any of the documents?
Do, I don't know. I haven't.
Is that in, that's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So we're switching because we're going from MJCARE to take care of our Medicaid billing to Kyle's consulting because of issues that we've had with MJCARE in the past couple of years and ease of use. We have staff to go get it, and the cost increase will be negligible. And we, we bring in quite a bit of funds from our, about $100,000 generally cost settlement plus our net payments for our billing, so the teachers are all for it.
I move that we accept the.
I move that we accept the agreement of Kyle's Consulting for back here.
Good. Motion from Mr. Mary, second from his law, we need to go with Kyle's Consulting for Medicaid.
It's a two-year contract too, I don't know if that was in there?
Yes, it, it appears that it's, uh, first year there's a start of P and A, so, one to fee for, here's one I took.
Yes.
All righty. Any other discussion? Bobby.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Mary Newco?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
And Mike Foldig?
Yes.
All righty. Uh, item F, purchasing supplies for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school.
I move the board approve the expenditure for the acquisition, uh, supplies for the twenty eighteen, nineteen school.
Second.
Okay. I'm locked up, yes, I'm. This is just a phone.
I don't know, I've never seen it, my whole thing is.
This is, yeah, this is, this is the same, this is going back to the old.
It says that you call for doctor.
Any discussion on the motion for the supply budgets? I mean, the district does their best to keep everything in line, and.
You know, essentially, we have an approved budget, so we're asking you to allow us to spend money getting ready for next year, knowing that we haven't approved next year's fiscal budget, so. Why we want.
Yep. Any further discussion? So there's not actually a dollar left?
We used to keep track of exactly how much we were gonna spend prior to August. Now we know it will be under a half million dollars in supplies, so. But, um, you know, and again, we do bring in foreign purchase orders in excess of five thousand dollars too, so, um, it's just a procedure fit to allow us to go ahead and get ready.
Yeah, when you passed the, something a couple of years ago, then anything over ten, put down a mandate, that coming forward for approval, so.
It's a lot of paper, no one.
Lots on it. All righty.
Uh, Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yeah.
No, um, Mary Newco?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Mike Foldig?
Yes.
Great. Item G, maintenance, plaster repairs at the Aquatics Center.
I move the board accept the bid from Quality Door and Hardware in the amount of. We have Newman Pools Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred dollars for the plaster repairs at the Claremont Canic Aquatic Center.
Second, Mary. All righty. Motion for Mr. Mary, second from his law.
Mike, if I could get the board to amend, uh, the motion. Um, the aquatics board has, um, donations in the amount of just over forty thousand, and then we have in a fund balance of a community fund of about, um, a hundred and fifty thousand. So we, we certainly have the funds to go ahead and do that. But what the aquatics board, um, approved was the expenditure just to win one pool this year. So, um, I believe the, if you open up Newman Pools bid, the second option was for the competition pool. That one has been noted on the, um, state inspection for the last two years, and that's the one they wanna address this year. So, if we could get the motion amended for the, I think it's. Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I amend the motion to that.
He won't open up.
Okay.
You're amending the motion to cover option two, ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars? You have what you're. That's what, that's what it is, my computer's not working now.
All right. All righty. You're gonna move, move to amend your motion to read ninety-nine thousand? Ninety-nine thousand nine hundred?
To include that competition pool.
Are we, let me make sure, I'm talking, we're just doing the competition right this year, so it would only be the ninety-nine thousand nine hundred?
Correct.
Okay. Eddie, you're amending your motion in that way?
Yes.
Do you need your second amendment? All right, first we have to vote on the amendment to the motion. So, all those in favor of amending the motion, as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the amendment. Now, the amended motion will read, I move the board accept the Newman Pools Incorporated in the amount of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars for the plaster repairs at the Claremont Canop Aquatic Center. Any discussion on the amended motion?
Does that amended motion need to state for the competition pool?
I don't think so.
Anybody else feel any differently? Okay, cool. Ben?
Bobby.
On the amended motion.
So, does the amended motion stay Mary and Long?
Yep.
Okay. Andy Mary?
Yeah.
Mary Newco?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yeah.
Mary Newco?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
And Mike Foldig?
Yes.
There. We're all straight on that. Uh, item H, maintenance, elementary door replacement. That's down on I, if you're looking at your computers today.
I move the board accept the bid from Quality Door and Hardware in the amount of fifty-four thousand seven hundred sixty dollars for the elementary door replacement.
Any motion from his, second from Mr. Mary. Uh, let me look up your shoulder here.
Is Jake, is it all the elementary buildings, or is it just? So what, what this is, is it's the three elementaries in the city, including the exterior doors. A number of them are wooden yet, a few of them are a mixture of some wood parts and some metal frames. Wood doors on metal frames, um, and the metal frames that are there. Some of those are probably forty years old. And have updated a few of them throughout the years, but not all of them, and, uh, it's been on the list to do. We did a big batch from last year, if you remember, at the high school and the middle school, and we've just been having the funding to finish. So this is just continuation from that work.
And this would finish all doors at the elementary, three elementary?
This would bring us, yeah, anything that is.
Exterior.
Exterior wise, we'd be good for.
It hasn't been replaced yet, it hasn't been done.
A few of them have been, but some of them are.
Right.
Still there, no doors.
Jake, if you could explain to the board why you only received the one quotation?
So, as I said, this is continuation work from last year. Quality Door got the bid last year to do the work. We speced out an automotive paint with a clear coat, which is a best practice for longevity of the doors, so. When I approached La Force, which is another door contractor that would bid and work like this, they, given the fact that Quality Door got it last year, and La Force doesn't typically do automotive painting, they suggested that they, they were not interested in it. And I said, well, that's, I understand, but it's unfortunate, they said, just with having to do something out of their norm to begin with, and the fact that Quality Door beat them on it last year, they didn't see why we'd be worth their resources, so.
How has the automotive painting held up this year?
Very good.
Very good.
Yeah, and Quality Door did a great job, and I did check numbers from last year's work to this year's work, and it seems well within reasonable mark of all constructions, I guess.
All righty. Any other questions, Jake, on this?
Are they gonna have the same security?
That will be prepped, you know, we, I'm gonna elaborate a little bit more, and I'd say the whole. The car access can fall into the school safety grant. The replacement of the actual door itself does not, or would rank very low and probably be beaded out because it's not as high a priority as other items. So when I look at it statewide, our door replacement that we could possibly claim for would probably be eliminated anyway, so we wanna put higher priority items into that grant to be accepted.
Gotcha.
Excellent. Bobby.
Mary Newco?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
And Mike Foldig?
Yes.
Next one up is a little higher.
Back in order for ya?
No.
No, I'm proud.
I don't.
Okay.
Is yours in order? I'm able to move mine around to, when I build the agenda, it's like, it's live doing the things that I did before.
Okay, well, in, uh.
There's no no higher.
No higher.
They will not, uh, next on, resignations.
I move the board accept the following resignations. Kathy Ferminick Food Service effective June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, and Jan Schmied. Executive Assistant effective June twentieth.
Motion for Mr. Mary, second from his law. Any discussion, uh, of resignations? Carrying none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Mike, I think Jan might have been the most senior support staff person we had in the district.
Her and Laurie.
And I actually think she was, uh, she was known more, and it's, and it's.
We do appreciate the service of both of these ladies, and wish them well in their future endeavors, whatever those may be.
Well, I'm still here in the state of luck.
Um, next up is the name of the scheme, donation.
I move the board approve the following donations. Two hundred and fifty thousand from an anonymous pledge to the foundation for the Devolken School Forest Project. Two hundred dollars from the Natural Living Greenhead for the eighty best normal playbill. Two dozen dollars from an anonymous donor for the AHS choir, Collins and Shine. And three hundred dollars from the Ayo Johnson Business Technologies for the Devolken School Forest Project. Totally, two hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Hey, motion from me, second from Mr. Pyatt. Well, two hundred and fifty thousand.
So, the, I had a conversation with the donor, and, um, the board has to take some formal action, and I'll bring it back in, um, the committee of the whole meeting in you. The donor wants to, um, do something with the stock option to, and go, leave a vice school to the Nantico Foundation. And, um, it's asking the board to take a formal commitment that if the funds are raised, um, the board will allow the project to move forward. And, um, you know, we're pretty confident as a committee, we can get that done, but we still have to do it. But the donor is asking for formal board action, so I wasn't aware of that initially, and we'll bring it back in.
So, coming with the minimum?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thing was to say, pretty impressive. And along with the other donations, we are very appreciative of what our community does.
Today, Mike, we have, um, I believe we received twenty-five thousand dollars from the Nantico Foundation, which we formally haven't received notification, but we received a ten thousand dollar donation today. So, everybody will.
Hey. You can't eat the elephant all at once.
Yeah.
So, that's wonderful to hear, Tim, thank you. Okay, motion is to approve the donations. Any other questions, comments, ideas? Bobby, let's do roll call on this one. Since there's a lot of money as well.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Mary Newco?
Yes.
And Mike Foldig?
Yes, with extreme red to community.
Yeah, I'll just step up. Okay. My computer's not working, and a piece of paper is, oh, okay. I move, time here, second.
Amazing.
Tim, Tim. Okay, first up, we have motion from Mr. Mary, second from Mr. Pyatt, to adjourn. Anybody hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, very good.